Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled township board supervisor meeting. Our first agenda will be a place to supply. Please will be just to reply of being and say some. And to the public from which it stands, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all. Tony B come forward please. I understand that you're up here tonight to start your standup comments.
If you want me to, I can.
So Tony, I have a resolution for you and all reasons for everyone. Whereas Tony L B began his career with Springersbury Township on May eighteenth nineteen ninety-two as a patrolman in the police department. And whereas in November of nineteen ninety-nine, Tony was promoted to corporal within the police department. And whereas in April of twenty twenty-two or twenty oh two, Tony was promoted to sergeant within the police department. Whereas in July of twenty oh six, Tony was assigned to the criminal investigation division. Whereas in April of twenty fifteen, Tony was promoted to lieutenant. Whereas Tony served the citizens of Springersbury Township for thirty years with dedication and faithful service. And whereas Tony began his retirement from Springersbury Township on March third, twenty twenty-three. Now therefore, be it resolved, board supervisors of Springersbury Township. On behalf of its citizens, wish to express sincere gratitude and appreciation. To Tony for helping you for his years of dedication, faithful public service and leadership. Board congratulates him on his retirement and wishes him and his family much happiness and good health. Adopted twenty-third of March, twenty twenty-three, Springersbury Township Board of City.
You heard. Stand here, I don't have to look at you, so I can. Uh, you heard Tony's dates of uh. All the different accomplishments he had throughout the department, different ranks he held. Um, there's some other things that he had along the way as well, I want to touch on based on, and that is. During his time, he was a field training officer. He's an accident reconstructions, interviewing interrogation specialist who didn't want to be interviewed by Tony, trust me. Um, internal affairs supervisor. And he was also involved heavily in our, in our Department of Justice review of the, of the department. And that included transformation of our standard operating procedures and administrative operating procedures into our general order format that we have now. Um, very instrumental updating the Springersbury Township Police Department's rules of conduct. And he was involved in shaping a lot of our policies, our major policies, our pursuit policies, our use of force policies. His imprint, we felt in that for years to come. And trust me, this is a very abbreviated list. I already gave you all of this accomplishments, we'd probably be here till morning, so uh. We'll skip that part, but I was asked to share stories about my time at the department. So I had to think about that for a while and I thought. I thought, okay, I got one, I can't share that one. And I thought, okay, wait. Can't share that one either. I got, yeah, okay, so what I landed on instead was just telling you about my experience with Tony and what he's meant to me as an officer. Now, I'm gonna try to squeeze that in the time I have up here, so bear with me, it's gonna be difficult, but. This has been part of my law enforcement career since I became a police officer, okay? Um, he was my training officer. He later retained, you know, appeared to me, a coworker. He was a boss, he was one of my bosses at one time. Uh, he was a discussion partner and he was a debater, he was a voracious debater. Um, at times, he was the protagonist, at times he was the antagonist. Uh, he is a very unique individual and somebody that always made me see things from a different angle. And, and see things in a different light, and I appreciate that. But most importantly, uh, what I found greatest attributes he has, he's accounted on, he's a friend and a brother in law enforcement. And I hope that. I was able to teach you fraction. Officers retired from the police department, they were able to power one of the, the service weapons that they used. So we did, if we. Have that made up. And he will have his service weapon they use and also. A full salary. His retirement badge, you know, I'd be. For years, thirty-one years, almost thirty-one years. Can't get through a career of law enforcement without our families, so. Am I supposed to say anything? I'm, I'm gonna give you brief is the. Everybody wants me to do that. So I'm gonna read my notes. And then you cause this, so let me read this here. Bread, milk, eggs. So I just wanna uh thank everybody, uh, anybody who was around on March third knows it was a real tough day for me, believe this department. Uh. So hopefully I'm past that part. I do have some notes, so. But I wanna thank everybody, I definitely wanna thank the board uh for basically supporting me and my family for thirty-one years. Appreciate everything you've done for us. Um, I was thinking that you're probably. I'll, I'll say you are the most supportive board township manager that I think I've had in the time I've been here, so we really appreciate that. And I hope you continue to support the police department. Uh. I thank my family, guess my wife just left me here. Uh, they made a lot of sacrifices over the years, especially her, you know, one of the biggest sacrifices she made was. I was on call for a long time, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and many times she'd wake me up and say, you need to answer that phone. Uh, because it was raining, because somebody needed something, so there was a lot of sleepless nights for her, so I appreciate that, everything my kids sacrificed. I loved, you know, almost thirty-one years working with these guys, uh. We worked as a team, we did good things while we were here, uh, I learned a lot. I saw a lot of bad things in my life, things that people shouldn't see, but. I also got to see the best of people in the worst of times and the best of people in the best of times, so. I wanna thank everybody here for everything they've done for me, uh, Todd, everybody else. And say, if I could, I'd do it all over, so thank, thank everybody who's involved in this and. I'm on my way.
You're the one that's, they stuck here, huh? We have had no executive sessions since the last meeting, so this time I want to open up the floor to communication for citizens. If there's anyone who would like to address the board, please come forward, do so, if there's anybody or Harry is online. Okay, so, no. Citizens from the community, yes, please. Thank you.
I'm, I'm Cheryl Tan, and. There were loads of them, because I. Spoke about I'd stay in. Storage preservation committee meeting, which has no context of what I'm gonna tell you, but. On the other day, I was coming out from my home, Druck Valley Road. I'm going to take a left to Mount Zion. Car in front of me, and I looked directly across the road. And there was a tractor trailer that is blocking. Druck Valley coming east. And I'm thinking, what is going on? Well, by the time I peeled my jaw off the ground, I watched this guy and they came U-turn. In the middle of Druck Valley and Mount Zion Road, so he could turn around and go back down the hill to Manchester. And I didn't, I couldn't even get, it's only not fast enough because I was like. Um, so my concern, since I live over the hill, is with all the new um. Warehousing going in, that you can see, and the traffic and the truck traffic. That in your section, there's enough trouble there and there's enough accidents. Is there anything we can do to prevent tractor trailers making new turns? Just a comment.
Hang aside, the intersection, this is, don't be stupid.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's getting worse, so I hope. As we move forward in the township and the competition, maybe whatever. We're gonna be aware of this kind of stuff, it's sure this is not gonna be the last time we see this thing. But the next time we'll get my phone in. Take pictures for you, because I couldn't believe it.
Thanks, Karen. Anyone else? Alright, then we'll move on to engineering reports, Diana. Questions? We shouldn't even make you stand up.
Thank you.
John Civil Engineering.
I wish I could do same, but Jim, a couple of quick updates, first of all, happy national surveyors week. So um. A- as you know, we uh had uh advertised for our Arley signal upgrade. And we got some feedback from some of the contractors that we like to work with that. They felt their timeline was gonna be tight because. To get matched arms to this day, it's a pretty long lead item. Two of them, I had some communication with Steve Balt, who's the PennDOT individual and the manager. Uh, extent, got an extension from uh PennDOT, so that's gonna give us a little more time. We had a optional pre-bid meeting here on Tuesday morning, it was pretty brief. And nobody showed up, that does not mean we have no bidders. Those signal contractors, contracts are pretty straightforward, so a lot of times they won't. Invest the time to go to a pre-bid meeting, they have their numbers worked out. We're gonna verify in the next couple of days, uh, tomorrow, to make sure we've got. Uh. A sufficient number of bidders, otherwise we could easily push the bid date out. To give them a little more time, but I don't think we'll need to do that, I'm not, like I said, there are six. Because we're on PennBid, I think there's at least six people interested, we just wanna get confirmation, they're staying in the game. And then um finally, I, I did report on that clean stormwater issue. And the manager, Public Works Director Randall and myself met with them today and, you know. It's a, a building that's been there for. Probably uh fifty years and, and they've got some. Serious hydraulic issues, it's gonna be an expensive repair, we, the manager's comment was, well, because they were complaining about. Upstream debris coming into their. Pipe, which goes underneath their building. And there's a strategy to try to. Uh, prevent that from occurring, but uh. We had a good meeting, obviously we can't participate in, it's all private property, uh.
There was Charlie say about that. Water flows downhill.
That was today's discussion. Just what you know, the, the owner, there's about almost uh three hundred and twenty acres that flows there and in their own. Uh, analysis that they had done, only like seven percent of it is urbanized, meaning developed. So ninety-three percent is farm fields, rocky ridge. So, so yeah, we're not the culprit here, it's not like, uh, he was asking us about other. Projects that got developed and have stormwater systems, really that's all natural flow there. But it is a, an expensive repair and uh we can provide some prevention of some of the debris getting there, but beyond that. It's a, it's a repair that they're gonna have to take on and.
Tell my story.
We, we tell them about many of our stormwater issues in the township and what your manager talked about. Uh, being on private property that we can't really, you know, get, get there. You know, and, and I'm not familiar with, with the grants, but I know there is funding by the state loan interest mode and. They, they could always try for that, and I think their response was, don't buy a trust, it's hard to get. They thought it would be difficult to get funding from a, a state source if they're, they're in a trust. And I don't understand those dynamics, but. But it is an expensive repair. Put that on, open up any questions if you come around.
John, I have one question, just from, you mentioned the extension of time with PennDOT for completion, how much time?
It actually rolled out to twenty twenty-four, uh, I think April of twenty twenty-three.
So the bidders have been advised, that we went through a tandem, what?
May thirty-first. It's the Arley grant, two Arley grants, both extension.
Well, it'll keep those people in the game, that they, specifically to hide, we have a lot of work and that's gonna be tight.
So. The first item here, talking about classic uh school zone signals and LED flashing. Uh, anywhere from not too bad to outrageous.
Yeah, I uh. I went into PennBid and you could look at accepted bids, there was one in Lancaster and there was one in Montgomery County of, Phil, Phil, Phil suburb. I mentioned that to the, the manager. And he said, well, maybe it had a lot of bells and whistles, and it has a few, it has like a. Uh, speedometer that will give you the speed of the vehicle going through, so. But it, it's not cheap and I. I was pride at it, but that's, that's the only bell and whistle that it really had, it was a, a signal plan, it was the, the flashing speed on the sign. And uh, that, the low bid was like uh. Like, I think like a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty thousand, if I'm not mistaken. That's a big number, and that didn't include in engineering in the signal plan and all that stuff. I, I expected it, to be honest with you, I expected it to be around. Fifteen, twenty grand, I was on. Pretty much off guard. And, and when I, after our last meeting, I mentioned the manager, that I looked at the, he had, uh, the police chief look at the. Can we get a, can we get a speed zone, school speed zone authorized? The answer is yes, we can. And then figured you'd wanna know about what we were range wise and he managed, so I mean, well, we have some. Less expensive alternatives before we go to the most expensive alternative. That's probably, I think, a good thought, but I never, I provided that number so that you know. Have some pretty solid e, pause for that location. And I'm not sure if I mentioned those, uh, LED. Lighted stop sign to go at the intersection, I don't know if I provided the price on that, but they're. And, and. Actually, I wanted it, and, and I'm, I'm not certain, they're, they're the. You know, people that were on stop sign or. Uh, roll through the stop sign, I'm not sure, I mean.
Since we're on the subject, the very next day after the last meeting, public works put up the. Cross, cross traffic doesn't stop. And the. Or more temporary yield to pedestrians, so I'll just back out as of this past.
That means it's gonna snow still. Anything else?
I, I've, I've one quick question for John. Um. I lost it already, the thirty-four twenty East Market Street. That uh, so, so that drawing is just. Something that they put together?
Oh, yes, that, they had, they actually had a, a consultant come in to evaluate this, this, it's about a. Five by eight rock Lee steel block culvert under the building, and what they told us today was that the. Condition of the culvert was in pretty good shape. Um, but it gets blocked with debris. And one of the things that we, and, and they've been hit like four or five times and, you know, you know the big storms we've had. And, and one of the things we went out and took a tour of it afterwards, and they have a grate. Well, the manager looked at the grate, the grate is pretty restrictive. And that may be causing some of their issues, but. The, the fact is that in basic storms, the water comes up against this head wall. Flows over and almost, and, and has flooded their loading dock and flooded the building. So one solution that you saw there, Mr. Bishop, was they have a range of one to three million. I will tell you, as you go through the D E P permitting process. D C's been telling me, you need to be able to get that water. Through that property, and currently, what we told them today is that thing's grandfathered. But if they were to build that site and there was a stream running through the middle of it. You have prohibitions to go, uh, you can't get within fifty feet of the embankment. So they'd have a big gap through the middle of their site. So, but now as they get into a repair, just like as we are doing repairs on some pipes, D E P is. Is requiring you to evaluate that and get it all permitted, it's a, it's a, it's a challenging time. And they're gonna run into that, they, it's not just the township that's. That may have a seat at the table, but D E P is gonna say, hey, if you restrict this water under your building and it floods people upstream. You're gonna hear about it and, and so they're gonna be forced by D E P to, to a specific solution.
So Don, you said thirty-four twenty, but I think you were talking about forty seventy-five.
Oh, I apologize.
It, it, it doesn't take much to get John started.
Yeah.
He likes stormwater, yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll ask my very specific question, that, the, the apartment building that's proposed. The drawing lists some zoning variances, three zoning variances, I think. That's, those are not zoning variances that have been granted, that's what they're thinking about.
And, and, and I apologize, like, that's the one that's where the, uh, the bridal shop is, um.
Yeah.
Lilo's?
Lilo's, where Lilo's is and, uh. Yes, right beside it.
Yes, they have been.
Have they? Okay, the answer to that question, Randall just informed me, was that under the old application or? When you said that they have, they had been granted those variances that are listed.
January, January, yeah, that's, but they all three of them got granted.
Okay, I say it correctly, those zoning variances have been granted.
Do they have been?
Say, have they?
Do they have them?
Yeah.
Obviously, if the zoning hearing weren't granted, they. They were granted, so for that. So they still have, and, and I hadn't, you know, this, this plan was proposed a number of years back.
Wait, it's not considered.
There is no, there is no formal land development or subdivision plan submitted, but the thing that got on my radar was. There was a request for a traffic study, they wanna have an entrance on the Market Street and went on to Eastern Boulevard. And when the first developer came in, we tried to convince them, why would you wanna cut a new driveway onto Market Street? Why don't you use? That access drive that currently goes between. Eastern Boulevard and Market Street, apparently that's privately owned by that apartment company. And uh, so the other developer went away, but they're, they're trying to get PennDOT to. Um, have them evaluate a new entrance onto Market Street.
I looked from the pictures that Charles just had up here, that there are multiple access points on the office.
Yeah, it's nice, I agree. Well, and, and there may be currently, you know, when, when, you know, if it's three or four lives and. And a lot of developers have come in and say, I'm closing five driveways, five driveways that are cuts but aren't really being used. And we're gonna create one driveway, which, you know, when you put a number of avenues that is.
Right in front of the U-Haul.
Looks like that's, that's.
So there are one, two, three, four, at least four.
This is the apartment.
Yeah, at least four cuts. It's a different property.
That's the, to do right now, that's the line.
Yeah, so there are four cuts into that. U-Haul situation.
Used by the U-Haul. Primarily, right, I mean.
I mean, there's U-Haul trucks in front of all of them, so I assume.
And, and they're, more than likely, they're not permitted driveways.
Wouldn't they be grandfathered in, couldn't they just?
Actually, PennDOT, even if you have a driveway that will be there for fifty years, it's paved, it's. Uh, a shopping center, if you don't have a permit for it, PennDOT. PennDOT will always threaten they can close it, but as you go to a new use, it has, you know, right, they gotta re-permit it and go as if it did not exist.
But if they left it open, they could continue to use it.
Well, if the use changes, which in this case, the use of changing, then you're in the target of the PennDOT permit guy.
So what was the settlement that they got?
Trying to think, there were three, Grant's requested on. One of them was for parking reductions, I think forty-eight parking spots was the requirement, they asked for forty-one. And they, they received that relief, that's one of my know.
Yeah, the, the, the first one on the drawing is a front setback. Um.
You have two front, front yards, three front yards.
So the private drive shouldn't get front yard, should it?
Well. Yeah, our words, you said street, boulevard, way, alley, is, is, is it private or public?
Private driveway?
Not private driveway, private access drive.
We know. That agenda, it's not very detailed.
The other one was to allow a dumpster in front yard. Of, of a corner line, then you've got multiple front yards, so they're placing the dumpster in one of those front yards.
The Eastern Boulevard front yard.
Oh, correct. And I was correct, it was forty-eight to forty-one parking spaces.
What are they? Gonna be doing with the extra space then? Are they changing buildings? And I see, I, I just saw your uh application to build. In the, in John's report.
We have not received the, the land development toll to be. The, the only application so far is the, the H O P permit to get on the Market Street. We are expecting to, but we have not received.
Okay, so if they. So presumably, it reduces the number of H O Cs, relocating the H O. Well, again, those driveways aren't permitted. Therefore, PennDOT's gonna not recognize those driveways. And.
So then they're going through the normal process, getting proper recognition to be.
Correct, and and it wouldn't be a. Classification as minimum, which is like for a house, now it'll be a low volume, low volume driveway.
So are they gonna put sidewalks in there?
If we make them. And and the low volume driveway, Pennant is, I'm just gonna tell you, in almost every municipality. In central Pennsylvania, they try to restrict the driveways to right in, right out, I mean, that's the the standards. Um, you know, when the the development for peace, mountain and market tech, they were going through. Pennant, they're trying to restrict them right in, right out.
Are they cobbling both tracks together? It's three, four, two, oh, is the old one way flag.
I think that's going to the U-Haul stands.
So I think that's what they told us.
Voice case said it really like four.
But they have trucks parked over the process, like they do.
We just parked one of the flower shops out of business for them.
So that was the old way, right?
So they're trespassing them.
Or running. There's an awareness from what I understand that they're doubting they're not gonna be able to.
Questions answered, John? Not really.
Yeah, the question, questions are answers. It, the the whole thing to me points up the big issue. Of. Are the interests of the Board of Supervisors of Springersbury Township? Being represented in front of the zoning hearing board? And and I'm not saying that they're not in this case, but.
But if if we didn't know that it was happening, we couldn't have expressed our opinion to be represented.
Excellent point.
John, if I'm looking at this correctly. The drive aisle is actually on the. U-Haul property, looks like the. The eastern boundary of the flower shop block is on the left-hand side of the drive aisle. So I'm not sure that this isn't for the benefit of the U-Haul owner as well as.
Maybe it's a shared driveway, that could be.
Yeah, cuz they they really don't have, the way this is. This shows, they don't have any access.
Correct, and and you know, to that point, their traffic buddy are called reading. Only allocated traffic from the apartment building, not from anything else. Or any cut through or anything like that, I'm just saying, so that won't be.
Well, they need to reverse subdivision, they're actually incorporating that drive aisle into the property of the flower shop. I don't know that they've applied for them, so can you create a lot that has no access to either street? Any street.
And they're probably trying to keep U-Haul out of it and saying, is there, and I don't know, you guys were looking at your phone, is there another driveway for the U-Haul property on the market?
Oh, yeah, there are.
There are, it's not very.
There's plenty of access on U-Haul.
Curved, it looks like they brought a radius around and ended the curve and then it's wide open to get the U-Haul on.
Yeah.
And you know, the, you know, we haven't reviewed this plan, but our. Our ordinance requires that access drive to be curved. Carrying that use. On the one side, I see it, it ends like right after radius, it stops. They're curving their parking lot, but not the access drive, which is required to be curved. And then they're showing it as a. Actually, there's an access easement already, according, according to this plan, Bob, and it's hard to read. There is an access easement, a twenty footer between U-Haul and the proposed apartment.
So there could be, that's where the.
That's probably, if it exists already, or if they created, you know, as part of this plan, I have no idea. And then I was gonna tell you that our minimum access drive width is twenty-four, and I think they have that, they have actually a twenty.
Twenty-six, it's twenty-six. Or no, it's not twenty-six. It's twenty-six from. The eastern boundary to. Lander area.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I don't see. Not to be, not to the end of the road. Unless they're considering that. I mean, that goes right up against the parking spaces.
Oh, and I know.
Not the drive line.
Uh, and you know, there's an existing building, uh, I just noticed this also, there's a building. On the northeast corner, I guess we're gonna eliminate that structure that's there.
Yeah.
One here.
It says to be raised.
Yeah, so it's gonna go away, and I I'm not sure if that'd be U-Haul building or not.
From my understanding, that that's the new building that they're proposing. Red outline.
Yes. They might use imagery. I guess that.
I I think my my biggest concern is that, you know, so so we don't have a land development and certainly we will get a land development if this is gonna move forward. So we we get our opportunities to. To make sure it conforms. But depending on what happens at the zoning hearing board, there's a possibility that they can get variances. That give them rights to do things that we might not be happy about. And and so my concern is there's things happening there that we may not be fully aware of. Or informed of ahead of time. I I know we don't necessarily have standing in front of the zoning hearing board, but we certainly. Can make our opinions known, like, I think a lot of those decisions are kind of made in a vacuum there.
There was one time, I think we had talked about some sort of initiative to have some sort of joint board conversation.
I think we also talked about getting heads up on what was going on with this on hearing, to keep it weighed in on things that we wanted to. Express an opinion. As I know in the past, we've had either John or Charlie or. James represent us uh. To make sure that our. Interests are known.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but they are public hearings, correct? There are hearing boards, and there are notices that are put out. And um. Have the ability to show up on behalf of the township and at least listen.
That's true, but I'll I'll speak for myself with the. Uh, with all the things that I have going on in my life, I'm not looking for. What's going to zone the hearing board every time, and that's why I asked her.
I I got it.
Can you give us some heads up that there are some things that might be interesting to us?
Yep, I I completely agree, just uh.
I believe.
That that might be their pushback, as it is a, it is a publicly available.
Oh, I'm not saying they should tell us.
Yeah.
Individually what's coming before them, but I'm sure that. Staff could uh. Keep us informed.
And we we normally, in, you know, we normally, an advocate will request a staff meeting to discuss. What's the probability of us being successful at the zoning hearing board and? Those kinds of things, and I I didn't, wasn't involved in any of those meetings, otherwise. I saw that there was. You know, uh, that the zoning, that that the board would want to oppose a variance, and we've done that on. Uh, past a dozen occasions, you know, I I'm not that I, I'm, I haven't seen the the testimony. Uh, for those variances, there are always, there's always. The challenging question, what's your hardship and things of that nature, I can't tell you the dumpster look like, I'm not sure what I can put it, okay? I'll, I'll give them that one, the other two, I'm not so sure.
Um, yeah, and I'm not, I'm not sure that we would have opposed these, that we. Discuss the uh, potential plan here anyway, it's just. Really good to.
Yeah, it's.
See it beforehand, whereas.
It it's important to understand when you, when you assert your standing. Whether it's before the hearing, post hearing, whether you're gonna be, be any behalf of losing party in that situation, so. Um, you know, standing is an important thing as it progresses through various court systems.
But I I I'd sure like to have a system where we know that we can. Express our opinion earlier rather than getting into the courts.
So to that end, do we have like a project pipeline software or something inside at one point?
What I'm planning on doing is when the zoning hearing board. Packages go to the zoning hearing board out forward, it's a more super.
Think that's fine. But in terms of other projects, do we have a pipeline software, or something that shows that all the projects are status?
We may have that, but as far as what's coming to us, we would have no idea what's coming to us, other than. Someone came to us and had a. Inform um. An official meeting, and this is what we're thinking.
It's worse than we get, we get them with none of our knowledge off of protections and injury boards, where they don't. Contact us and let us know that they're coming, they just drop it off, which they can certainly do, there's no obligation.
To have staff do it as a.
Right, yeah, that I understand.
Yeah, so we don't always know what's forthcoming.
Yeah, and I get that. We don't have a way to track all the projects, once they hit our our radar, for lack of a better term. Hey, what that means, but we don't have a system or software to track projects, it's a pipeline to see. And they gotta go to zoning, they gotta go to planning. Plan expired, we don't have to track.
Yeah, it's what we know.
I'm not sure how we would keep that up to date, though. That would be something that a developer or. Interested in, and they may add dates that we don't. We track these dates, or when things expire. We track what we need to know, we just wouldn't necessarily know if they've scheduled a zoning hearing, what would they tell us, why would they have to tell us? To put in our tracking software, and that would be a whole. Bunch of work for somebody. They do, they do fill out an application for a zone hearing board. And that's how we create the agenda.
Okay. Then there is a trigger, there is a trigger.
There is a trigger, and the board has has asked for that in the past, and. I failed to follow through with getting that too.
The the one thing that the zoning office has to do, where I play that role now, Tim Holmes, he has to make sure that the hearing occurs within sixty days of filing the application. And that's his mantra, cuz if we, he doesn't get in there on time, then he's. He's got effectively like a deemed approval, like we track land development plans for the project to make sure we're, we're on top of that, right? And normally with zoning hearing applications, they don't grant a time extension unless we get to a point of we. Like, I've seen them come into zoning hearing, you know, the exhibit you have, you don't even have an exhibit of where this. Structure is gonna be, and the solicitor for the zoning hearing would say, you got two options, vote on it right now, you probably won't wipe the outcome, or. You give us a time extension and you come back with more information next month.
Done on that, done on the planning commission as well, right? All right, anything else, sir? All right, thanks, John. Next, we have our consent agenda items A through F, anything that anyone would like to have. Further discussion on?
I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through F.
Second, motion on a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have, this poses contracts and agreements, first one is. Authorization of additional service requests from New Garden architects for the Springersbury Township building renovation and expansion project. In an amount not to exceed ninety-seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Just preparing, this is due to the delay in the construction. Majority, there are some things that they did for us in the project. At extra time. On their part that have no bearing on the project. And and one, for example, that comes to my mind right now is that security gate. In the lobby that separates a community room from the lobby. So. And the other comes to mind is we've been, we've been downgrading our ceilings.
So is this part of the construction budget? The court, please. Um, should we include that as part of our current track costs and? Which will get reimbursed for exact strength or damage.
Well, the majority is that, of this ninety-seven deaths. Since we all have an authorization, definitely hard to have it.
Well, we've done a previous authorization. If we done a previous, previous authorization for group part of our.
Previous extension.
And that's not.
We did one in. November, December. Yeah. Your motion?
Mister Chairman, I would move for authorization of additional service requests from New Garden.
Second.
I have a motion on a second, all in favor? Uh, next is authorization to award any twenty-three traffic line painting and pavement marking contract to D E Gemel Incorporated in the amount. Twenty thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars and forty cents. Mister Chairman, this is part of our annual. Roadway line painting that the. Joining with several other local municipalities to do one bigger bid for. Better pricing, this is Springersbury's portion of that overall bid. Questions? Your motion?
I'll move to authorize awarding the twenty-twenty-three traffic line. A department contract to D E Gemel in the amount of twenty thousand six hundred and forty.
Second, I have a motion on a second, all in favor?
Thank you.
All right.
Communication from supervisors. Anybody have anything?
I would like to bring to your attention that P S A S has proposed a rule change to the bylaws. Um, this came out very recently, quite on fifteenth story. Um, this came out very recently, about the fifteenth story. Uh, they are proposing and adopting a three percent dues increase. And so, I'm not sure. Certainly could use a little census thoughts. Probably makes a lot of sense to have the dues increased, this is one of those typically. Uh, undertaken every year as I stand it, three percent is not that much in today's inflation. But I'm not sure if we've ever voted on this. Right, so unless anyone horribly objects to this. This one, ten percent. Uh, I will be going to represent Springfield's for that. Always supervise.
Okay, what plus one hundred bucks, right?
Anyway, two to seventy-two dollars. There you go, I will vote that way. So that's all I have.
Anybody else?
Nope.
All right, uh, committee reports, friends of camp security.
Hello, anybody?
Ready to jump right in?
Yeah.
Hey, uh, so I am John Cromer, I'm the lead archaeologist for the Camp Security Archaeology Projects. Um, and I'm just gonna take a few minutes to present our findings from recent evaluation this past around October. Um, just a reminder, um, in terms of why I've been working so hard to find this site, uh, Camp Security is the last surviving Revolutionary War prison camp in the United States. Um, it was occupied longer than other more famous battlefield sites from the period, such as Valley Forge. Uh, it's also qualified for the National Register under criteria A and D. Uh, that being the site is a significant historic, is the site of historic, um, events. Um, and it's, uh, has a high potential to yield new insights into American history. Uh, the preservation area is roughly a hundred and sixty acres in size, um, positioned near the intersection of Eastern Boulevard and Lough Strick Road. Uh, and property is divided roughly into four fields. Uh, with a large natural spring at its center, artwork in twenty-twenty-two was in the East Lower Fields. Uh, we also worked in this field in twenty-twenty-one. Um, that year we dug a series of long excavation trenches, hopes of finding a historic stock cave. Um, these trenches did not look, locate the stock cave, but we did find eleven historic post holes, which were scattered across the field. Uh, these post holes were varied in size, uh, the biggest being roughly a foot in diameter. And the spacing is random, so there's no way for us to know if these post holes were related to the historic camp. Um, so this was our primary research question going into twenty-twenty-two. Um, these yellow lines here are excavation trenches from twenty-twenty-one. The red dots are post holes that we found in twenty-twenty-one. Um, in twenty-twenty-two, we excavated large excavation blocks around these trenches and these post holes. Uh, with the hopes of finding more post holes. Um, and hopefully finding patterns to understand that there are still structures there. So this is what we found in twenty-twenty-two. We found seventy-eight post holes. Uh, four pits in the trench. Um, and looking at this, you might already start to see some formation shaping up at the side. So we have three large wall structures. Uh, these posts, these are, have, uh, posts that are quite large. Um, most are over a foot in diameter, the largest being about. Almost two feet in diameter, uh, three feet deep, so it's a very, very large post. Um, they also have smaller bracing posts along their edge. There are, um, two twelve-foot gaps, uh, between the walls, which could be entrance ways, I'm not totally sure yet. Um, and there's a fifteen by fifteen foot, uh, interior structure that are butts one to walls. Um, and inside of there is, are two shallow, unfortunately those pits were empty, um, they could have had, it could have been. Um, storage pits that were cleared out at some point, um. But unfortunately didn't have anything in that side. Further to the west, we have a possible fence line and the reason that. We think this is a fence line is because the posts are much smaller in comparison, about a, about a two to three diameter. Um, they also lack the bracing posts that we're seeing. We didn't date as much in this area, so there could be larger posts. Um, there, but we, we don't know, so at this time we're going at a possible fence line. It's time. And then here's our most exciting finding, um, so we found a stockade that was constructed, opened by opening a linear trench. Uh, and setting posts into it and then backfilling, so. You can see we have a trench with a series of post holes in it and. Some, some of these post holes are quite large and there are smaller post holes set in between these larger posts. Um, see, it also takes a little bit of a turn there too. Historic accounts, um, say that this stockade feature was about two hundred yards downhill from the site of Camp Indulgence, which. Camp Indulgence was founded in nineteen seventy-nine by the State Museum. Um, in the field, um, south of this field, which is also a higher elevation. Um, measuring from where the excavation took place in nineteen seventy-nine to this feature is a hundred and seventy-five yards downhill. Um, similar stockade features are also found at French and Indian war sites in Pennsylvania. Um, these sites include Fort Ligonier, Fort Loudon, Fort Halifax. There's also a possible fire pit just south of there, say possible because we didn't finish excavation there. Of course, we found the most significant thing in the last week of excavation, that's usually. Inside. Um, so just to quickly summarize, the twenty-twenty-two investigation was our most successful, successful in recent memory. Uh, the discovery of the camp stockade is our first physical evidence of the camp and provides an anchor for future work. Um, the discovery of the stockade was also picked up by the Associated Press. And was published in newspapers across the nation, including the Washington Post, Baltimore Sun and LA Times. Um, other news outlets also, um, carried the news, um, such as NBC, CBS and Fox. Um, it was also picked up internationally by newspapers in Canada and UK. This media response highlights the public interest in the site, not only in terms of. United States and American history, but Canadian and U K history as well. Archaeologists from the State Museum also didn't get a chance to see this feature while it was open. Um, and we're excited about our findings. So turning the page to twenty-twenty-three, uh, we're now focused on uncovering the rest of the stockade feature. Uh, doing so will give us a much better idea of space, so we'll finally be able to start to understand where things are on the property. Uh, we had grant funding from HMC for an excavation this May. Um, we'll be using a, another small, one to one and a half acre sized project area for this project. Um, and volunteer registration is currently open, we've had a pretty strong response so far, uh, we have roughly twenty volunteers. With still a month to go until we start digging. At the next slide, and if anyone is interested in following our work, um, you can follow us Instagram, Facebook and our website. Um, so any, I'm happy to answer any questions.
That's pretty exciting.
Yeah.
This is very satisfying.
Yeah, this is huge, yeah.
Yeah, so we've been looking for it for, since twenty-fourteen, so, quite a while.
John, is one to one and a half acres large enough to accomplish what you'd like to do?
Yeah, I think so, so the, um. The, the camp is described as being about that size and we don't have to uncover the entire stockade, we just need to get slices of it and we can kind of connect the dots.
So what's the longer term, or I, maybe it's medium term strategy then, let's say you do this excavation, you uncover the entire footprint or enough, like you say, connected dots. What's the next couple of steps?
Yeah, so the. Assuming we're able to uncover the whole stockade, one, but enough of it, um. Then we'll be able to start planning. More excavations in terms of like partnering with schools. Making a field school, that type of thing. It, Camp Security is really interesting because there are no other sites like this in the world. So there's a lot of really interesting research questions related to the site. Um, and it's a great opportunity in terms of education and, uh, field schools. That would be a part of a larger grant type project, um. In, in the medium term, in the longer term, we would also want to start looking into National Register nomination. For the site. It's another aspect of it.
How about, is there anything that we as a board need to be concerned about in terms of preserving discoveries that you have made?
Yeah, so there's, there's a question, so it is a very, very large area, one hundred and sixty acres. And the question is, you know, do we start. Peeling back some of this hundred sixty acres using it for other, other means and. Part of the problem with that is that we just don't know, this is a very large complex.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we just don't know. Enough yet to, to know if we would destroy something if we start peeling back area. Um, hopefully, once we get the footprint of the stockade, then we can have a better idea in terms of. Where things are. Um, but for right now, it's still a little bit of a mystery, we just sort of hit that first little. Line of evidence, it's like, yes, we've got something. But. Yeah, it's, it's. It's hard, I, I would recommend not getting too crazy, crazy, because we just don't know what's out there. Yeah. Um, also, uh, as a part of this, um, we have the artifacts that, um, need to be given to the State Museum, um, from the site. Um, so I have the gift agreement, uh, form, um. That, um. Orders to prove.
I think that's the next.
So on the next thing, I think, or, yeah, um.
No, we don't have that.
Under number nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize project manager to execute document agreements, donate artifacts to artifacts from Camp Security to the state historical. Preservation. To the State Museum, State Museum, yeah.
Second.
I have a motion on a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Very exciting.
Congratulations, John, and Carol, congratulations.
Chairman, does this mean that this goal forces him?
I just, you stole my line.
Sorry.
Great minds. Um, anything under old business that anyone would like to bring forward this evening?
Mr. Chairman, if, if the board would be so inclined, I'd like to go over item A.
Um, perfect.
I'll get the township manager.
Oh, I did?
Yeah, and, and.
And.
I thought we already signed that.
We have to.
Oh, we didn't, we didn't resolve it, we just signed it.
This is the official.
Okay. Didn't have it, okay, township manager's report.
I have nothing bad.
It wasn't.
Was that, was that worth the squeeze at it, or is there anything?
Like I gotta say something.
Well, there's nothing, there's nothing.
Nothing to add.
I mean, the agenda that says that you have one.
No, no, nothing to add. I have a question for the manager, has Mr. Crable decided to name our various roles?
I briefly talked to him about it. He gave me a wide eye. And Mr. Charles gave me this news article about it, so I will share this with him gladly tomorrow.
Excellent.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch what that was about.
That was about, you don't want to know. I show you, this is awesome, some municipalities actually named the town clubs.
Name their what?
So.
I think we ought to have the kids design wrappers for these things and.
We could do that. Don't you need a little snow though to show it?
Well, it, it also has to be, yes.
That's true.
You know, a league.
Well, I should like it.
Or, like it.
I just have to see.
That's great.
Where are they?
Sweet child, Brian. Oh, jeez. It goes on.
Anything else more?
No, sir.
All right, um. We have resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-nine recognizing Tony Bean, since we've already done it, probably all approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of resolution twenty-three dash twenty-nine, recognition of Tony El Queen for his unit service in Springfield Township.
I will motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we're caught back up, how about item A on all of those?
Um, Mr. Chairman and the board. As I stated in a previous meeting. We had a staff meeting, including me. Police chief, fire chief, home clerk, directors, township engineer, to discuss ideas of how we can. Make it difficult or uncomfortable for cut-through traffic during the bridge replacements over eighty-three Evers Lane and North, North Sherman, which will be done at two different times. Uh, they won't be done at the same time, what, Evers Lane is going to start first. This year and they anticipate that to be a year and then I don't have the information on. North Sherman Street as far as how long that.
Is there going to be any overlap with those construction projects?
To my, to best of my knowledge, there will not be overlap as far as both of them being closed at the same.
Okay.
So. During, in, in that conversation that we had, I mean, we had was very productive, but I felt it was very productive. So what I want the board to look at, if you would, is. John created a map of our ideas for. That neighborhood. See if you see anything that you think we missed or didn't think of. And if not, then our next step is going to be. Send letters to all the residents to have a meeting to present this idea to them, to get their feedback. On what we came up. So. Under old business A. There is an attachment there.
Yep.
And I apologize, I didn't get it to Abby, so she can't share. The screen, so.
This has got to be in traffic engineering ease because. I understand.
It is, so if you're looking at. The. Pentagon seventh and White Roads and Evers Lane.
Oh, I see the arrows.
So. We, we have, the arrows are indicating what we're going to try to do with one-way only during the construction. And John has noted here on White, that's T four twenty-one. Uh, eleventh is T eight forty-four. Those areas where we. Those areas where we have speed humps. I don't think. We're going to have cut through problems on Evers is closed down as much as obviously the chairman is. Um one thought we had coming our meetings. Is can we keep Evers Lane closed? The bridge. Keep the roadway closed when they're doing Sherman Street Bridge. Is that's going to be the problem, when Sherman Streets closes, that's going to be the cut through problem. I feel. I have to run that by Charlie because it's. From what I read. The the board's the only one that can authorize. A road closure like that. But it's said, we're constructing. Something along, if you read into it exactly how it reads, I take it has to be inactive structures.
So we dig up a section of roadway.
So that was. But. Again, that would come later. I want to talk to the. Residents to see me what they feel about and on all of these objects. Talking to.
So. We have some. Overlap, two way and that's small connector.
I apologize, I should have, I totally forgot about it, haven't given this to Abby.
Um that's eleventh, is that eleventh? Avenue, uh there's a small section there. Between the wafer road loop and the smaller loop out to Sherman Street, right?
Yeah, T eight four four section.
T eight four four, there's a small piece of it.
And T six ninety is Thomas Street.
Yeah, so between Thomas Street and Evers Lane. There's a small piece where it's where it's two way. There's going to be one way. Do not enter signs. On either side of that, so any traffic coming. From Sherman Street would have to take a left and go away through road and then hit those two speed homes, is that right? Any traffic coming in from thirty, you have to go to eleventh avenue. Two speed homes. Just a question, around that corner. Coming in from thirty, where you make that turn onto eleventh. Um I went around there when I was kind of checking the area out, I went really slowly, but I could see a car trying to. Speed up to that turn, make the sharp turn and then speed up again without knowing the speed on, so.
We we would have advanced note of signs that that speed on coming and you certainly want to. We decelerate before you got there.
Again, this is just a concept drawing, but. On the drawing, it shows the speed hub ahead sign would be after that curve. Again, we can. Yeah, we're changing, but. On according to this. That does not.
Put a sign that says short turn and speed home ahead.
We can, yes, a a warning sign we can put, it's not regulatory, so we can put warning signs up.
And I think it's important to note, the fire chief. Was, when Mark had mentioned, well, what if we kept? Evers closed. Until all that work got completed and fire chief said as far as. Typical response of between York City and the author, he didn't think that would be a problem. Am I calling you correctly? It's yours, okay.
So is that access road? Private? Or should that be factored into?
I see. Oh, it is up on the screen.
Yeah, it's on the eleventh. Then the Google Maps goes from eleventh here with P eight four four and connects to Evers.
Well, that's a. There's like, you know, a dirt runway.
Yeah.
We have one of those parcels there, it's kind of like a. Chair's driveway.
Private.
Well, we would be within our rights to put a Jersey barrier across there and block traffic if. Somebody tried getting creative and slipping through there. If we own.
Well, if they tried to do that, it's putting them back out on T eight forty four, so they would have to turn left. You have that one.
So then, gotcha.
So I don't wouldn't really comment on this.
That might be part of our signage. And that road sort of rots if I look more correctly, it's very, is.
So again, this, these are just thoughts that the group of us came up with, nothing's cast in stone, obviously I want. We want to get in front of it. But. As we talked before about other traffic calming measures elsewhere. It's unfortunate, but the reality of it is the the residents suffer as well because it's inconvenient for them.
So somebody, the far eastern end of T eight forty four would. If they wanted to go outward thirty, we'd have to go all the way around.
Correct, go over four speed humps.
So.
Go out in North Sherman Street. That way.
Yeah.
So they. Traffic comes down on T four T one and hits that exit. On the thirty. Just as it is today, forever.
And none of this in impacts as far as the businesses to the right of. Kind of off the screen, so not off the screen but off the map. The those businesses, that roadway would be two way. Right, it would only impact them if they go past that intersection.
So what about the impact, is there still a house worship in that area as well?
There there is at the. Right there. So that can be, John reached out to the pastor of that. Church, we could hold the meeting there and and he felt that that would be fine.
While we didn't do it on Sunday.
So then, all those people would have to go left. Now, which increases traffic. It's present day, they're probably sucking right out of that.
Yeah, what's the, what's the building to the east of the church, it looks like there's another parking lot, it's backed behind the stream behind the ball.
That's part of Jim Ball, I believe.
That's I don't body shop, I thought.
How do they get there?
There's a Alber Bridge. When you come down to that hard turn that goes. West, you go right, you go east.
Yeah, so anybody trying to get there.
Would be able.
Get there easily, but to get back to Jambal, they would have to go all the way around, correct?
And the businesses would be included in our menu.
Yep.
Yeah, I like it.
And we'll have to come back. To the board. Because all all of these. Regulatory restrictions will have to be done by ordinance, making enforceable for the least of. The one ways.
Yep. We need a lot of notice for that, honestly.
Just, just one, it's not as only.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will get the letters out to those, that neighborhood and we'll go from there.
Be interested to know in that meeting.
All right, um. Anything else on this list that we want to talk about tonight?
I could just make one comment on I M C rescue funds. I think the manager for putting together some thoughts and ideas here, I'll just say my immediate reaction to this. It's wherever we can take pressure on general fund budget, it's the my priority of doing things. And I just have one question on this. Are any of the traffic study improvements? That were in there, are we allowed to spend any money on any of those? Is that not allowed?
Yes, I believe we are.
That would qualify.
They written, I'm sorry, man.
That would qualify as taking some. Possibly taking pressure on future general fund budgets.
That. Just my opinion, from my opinion only. I I feel that the dollars are best spent for. Capital, infrastructure items like that. But what I was going to say, originally when all this came out. It was pretty restrictive. Then probably from feedback, they made it less restrictive. And I was just in a seminar last week on it. And there's going to be some more information coming out here probably in the next couple of weeks, but it's basically. Anything that municipals' normal business is. Kind of qualifies and loop attentions and and different things, get yourself out of trouble, it can't be used for that kind of thing. But pretty much everything else.
All right, anything else?